Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Father Cyril Edwards. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray, my friends. Almighty God, pour out your wisdom on those appointed to serve us today on all levels. Give them the courage to make decisions that will benefit all of our people. May they pay special attention to the needs of those living on the margins, the poor, the needy, the lonely, who need our help. May the service of our elected officials make us better people, more caring people, and make this area our city a proud place to call home. We make all these prayers in your name. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
In accordance with the Homero Charter of the City of Scranton designating the first Monday of January as the date for City Council to reorganize, I hereby call this 2020 reorganization meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
At this time, I ask that as you were called to be sworn, will the judges and elected officials please sign the documents when you are finished? I have before me the Certificate of Election for Mr. John Murray, City Controller. Will the council adopt a motion to the effect that the certificate be received and ordered filed and made part of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. I will now ask Judge Terrence Nealon to come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Murray for the elected office of City Controller.
Please put your left hand in the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, John J. Murray...
I, John J. Murray...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
...as Controller for the City of Scranton...
As Controller for the City of Scranton...
...with fidelity...
With fidelity...
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
McAndrew as City Council Persons. Will the council adopt a motion to the effect that the certificate be received and ordered filed and made a part of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I just want to congratulate Dr. Rothschild and Councilman McAndrew. They are going to be great additions to this City Council. I've had the opportunity now to get to know Dr. Rothschild over the last few months, and she is extremely intelligent, compassionate, and she is a driven person who is committed to turning this city around. Councilman McAndrew has a reputation as an independent leader who stood his ground and fought for the people on the Scranton School Board, and I'm excited to get to work with both of them, and I want to personally congratulate them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. I will now ask Judge Julia Munnely to come forward and administer the oath of office to Dr. Jessica Rothschild for the elected office of City Council.
Present. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. And first of all, I want to say I'm honored to be here today. So please repeat after me. I, Dr. Jessica Rothschild...
I, Dr. Jessica Rothschild...
...do solemnly swear with heart...
Do solemnly swear with heart...
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of these United States...
The Constitution of these United States...
...and the Constitution of this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
...and that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
...of this City Council, the City of Scranton...
Of this City Council, of the City of Scranton...
...with fidelity... So help me God.
I will now ask Judge Terrence Gallagher to come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Mark McAndrew for the elected office of City Council.
Congratulations.
Mark, Mark.
Do you want to have someone else where you're in? I didn't see him.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mark McAndrew... Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear... ...that I will support, obey, and defend... That I will support, obey, and defend... ...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
...and that I will discharge the duties...
And that I will discharge the duties...
...of my office as a member of Scranton City Council...
Of my office as a member of Scranton City Council...
...with fidelity...
With fidelity...
...so help me God. Congratulations.
I will now accept nominations for temporary chairperson. What is your pleasure?
I move that Mr. Rogan be appointed temporary chairperson.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Mr. Rogan, will you please take over as temporary chairperson?
Yes, I will now call for a nomination for a permanent president of council for the ensuing two years.
I nominate Bill Gahn as president of City Council.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Abstain.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare Councilman Bill Gahn duly and legally elected president of the City Council. years.
I nominate Kyle Donahue as Vice President of City Council.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Abstain.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare Councilman Kyle Donahue legally and elected Vice President of City Council. I will now ask for nominations for City Clerk.
I nominate Lori Reed, City Clerk.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I've had the opportunity to work alongside Mrs. Reed now for the past six years. She is one of the most dedicated and respected public servants in the City of Scranton. There is not a day that goes by where she isn't helping a resident of the city with an issue or working out a problem within City Hall. Every quality that you would want in a city clerk, compassion, integrity, trustworthiness, dedication, honesty, Mrs. Reed has. It's been a true honor to have her lead this council the past six years, and I'm looking forward to working with her and driving her crazy over the next two years. Thank you.
I'd like to second those comments and just say that this wouldn't be possible without the assistance of Ms. Reed, and we appreciate it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare Mrs. Lori Reed duly and legally elected City Clerk.
At this time, I would like to make a motion that City Council appoint Attorney Kevin Hayes to the position of City Council Solicitor.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I want to thank Attorney Hayes for submitting his name for this position. His resume was very impressive, and I have no doubt that he will be able to guide this council through some of the unique and challenging legal issues that the city faces.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
The ayes have it and so moved. Mr. Rogan, will you please take over as temporary chairperson? Yes, I will now call for a nomination for a permanent president of council for the ensuing two years.
I nominate Bill Gahn as president of City Council.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Abstain.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare Councilman Bill Gahn duly and legally elected president of the City Council. I will now call for a nomination of Vice President of Council for the ensuing two years.
I nominate Kyle Donahue as Vice President of City Council.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Abstain.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare Councilman Kyle Donahue legally and elected Vice President of City Council. I will now ask for nominations for City Clerk.
I nominate Lori Reed, City Clerk.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I've had the opportunity to work alongside Mrs. Reed now for the past six years. She is one of the most dedicated and respected public servants in the City of Scranton. There is not a day that goes by where she isn't helping a resident of the city with an issue or working out a problem within City Hall. Every quality that you would want in a city clerk, compassion, integrity, trustworthiness, dedication, honesty, Mrs. Reed has. It's been a true honor to have her lead this council the past six years, and I'm looking forward to working with her and driving her crazy over the next two years. Thank you.
I'd like to second those comments and just say that this wouldn't be possible without the assistance of Ms. Reed, and we appreciate it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare Mrs. Lori Reed duly and legally elected City Clerk.
At this time, I would like to make a motion that City Council appoint Attorney Kevin Hayes to the position of City Council Solicitor.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I want to thank Attorney Hayes for submitting his name for this position. His resume was very impressive, and I have no doubt that he will be able to guide this council through some of the unique and challenging legal issues that the city faces.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
The ayes have it and so moved. I will now ask Councilman Gahn to come forward to be sworn in as City Council President by Judge Thomas Munnely.
Before I swear in, Bill Gahn, I want to say that seven years ago, Mayor Jimmy Cavanaugh and Dora Kravitz said, "You know what? You have to meet this young man at the question of your office." And I met someplace, I don't know if it was a restaurant or a party, and I met a man who, in my opinion, is everything that's required of this city. Let's give him a hand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lord God...
I, Lord God...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
...and I will faithfully discharge before my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge before my duties...
...in my office as President of Scranton City Council...
As President of Scranton City Council...
...with fidelity...
With fidelity...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
...so help me God. Billy Gahn, your friend of the city.
I will now ask Councilman Donahue to come forward to be sworn in as City Council Vice President by Judge Terry Nealon.
Left hand in the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Kyle Donahue...
I, Kyle Donahue...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
...and I will discharge the duties of my office...
And I will discharge the duties of my office...
...as Vice President of Scranton City Council...
As Vice President of Scranton City Council...
...with fidelity...
With fidelity...
...so help me God.
I will now ask Mrs. Reed to come forward to be sworn in as City Clerk by Judge Paul Ware.
I, Lori Kirby...
I, Lori Kirby... ...do solemnly swear... ...that I will support, obey, and defend... ...and the Constitution of the United States... ...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania... ...and I will discharge the duties of my office... ...of the office of City Clerk... ...with fidelity... ...to the best of my ability... ...so help me God.
of Scranton City Council.
Thank you. We are now ready to consider the rules of procedure by which this council will be governed during the next two years. What is your pleasure?
I move that the rules...
I move that the rules of council be adopted by Resolution Number 1, 2020, as required by the Homero Charter.
Second. Mrs. Reed, would you please read Resolution Number 1, 2020?
Resolution Number 1, 2020, adopting the rules and order of business of the Scranton City Council, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. The following will be the committee chairpersons for the next two years. I will be the chairperson for the Committee on Rules. Mr. Rogan will be the chairperson for the Committee on Finance. Mr. Donahue will be the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works. Mr. McAndrew will be the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety. And Dr. Rothschild will be the chairwoman of the Community Development Committee. The chairpersons for the subcommittees will be as follows. I will be the chairperson of Pension Review and Administration. Mr. Rogan will be in charge of Revenue and Taxes. Mr. Donahue will be in charge of Intergovernmental Relations. Mr. McAndrew will be in charge of Boards, Commissions, and Shared Services. And Dr. Rothschild will be in charge of Economic Development. I will now call on each council member for a few brief remarks. Councilman Rogan, do you have any remarks at this time?
Yes, briefly. I'd like to just congratulate our new members, Mr. McAndrew, Dr. Rothschild. You both ran very impressive campaigns, especially Dr. Rothschild being from, not from, born in Scranton and being the top vote getter in the election. You certainly ran a great campaign, the both of you. Looking forward to working with you. And we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I'm sure as a body, working with the new mayor, we'll be able to accomplish a lot of great things for the city. Thank you.
Mr. Donahue, do you have any remarks at this time?
Yes, just briefly. I'd also like to just congratulate Mr. McAndrew and Dr. Rothschild. I've known Mark for about six years now. We served on City Council together, and I look forward to working with him, or School Board together. I look forward to working with you on City Council now. And Jess, welcome. I got to know Jess pretty well over the last few years, and I think she'll be a great asset to this council. And it's time to get to work. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any remarks at this time?
Yes, I do have a few remarks. My first time giving remarks here. I am honored to do so and to be up here with you all. First, I'd like to thank the voters for putting their faith in me. I am happy to serve, and I will work hard. I will listen to your concerns, and I'm just ready to get to work. And there's a few other people that I'd like to thank, too. Thank you to Tim Perry and Mary Walsh-Emcee for their service on City Council, for their time and dedication. Thank you to Mayor Wayne Evans, or at least for another half an hour, as he told me, and for his time on council and as mayor of the city for taking the helm and helping us in our time of need. And I'd really like to thank especially my wonderful wife, Bridgette, who I met eight years ago, who kept me here in Scranton so that we could live this amazing life, and I'm so happy to be here. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any remarks at this time?
Yes, I do. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank my beautiful family that's sitting here. Running for election and holding public office is hard, but it's harder on one's family. So without their love and support, I wouldn't be sitting here right now. Their love and support has been my biggest motivation. I'd like to also thank everybody sitting in this room. I know that you're either here supporting someone on the dais, but I know you're all here to support our great city. So thank you for that. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Rothschild. I look forward to working with her. I'd like to congratulate President Gahan and Vice President Donahue for being elected that today. I'd like to thank Pat for your previous service and your continued service. I look forward to working with you. And I would like to thank Mayor Evans and Mr. Perry, who just, you know, for their service that just finished up today. So once again, I just want to thank all of you, and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I want to thank all of you for coming this morning. I was just talking to Councilman Donahue before. There's quite a buzz in the air here, and it's very good to see. I appreciate Judge Munnely for swearing me in. He has sworn me in every time I've been elected a council, and he has been a great friend over the years to me, and I want to thank him for all that he's done for our community. Thank you so much. I want to recognize our new City Controller, John Murray, who was sworn in earlier this morning. I am very confident that John will do a great job as Controller, and I want to thank him for taking on this challenge and serving the public. I also want to thank, personally thank, as I did at the Sinai-Dai meeting earlier this morning, good friend Mayor Wayne Evans. Wayne Evans, you will not find a more dedicated individual to this city. You will not find a more compassionate individual. He took on some enormous challenges. He was able to hold this ship steady, and I really appreciate all that he did for our city. So thank you again, Mayor Wayne Evans. I also want to recognize... I also want to recognize, I saw Mayor Gene Peters here this morning. It's interesting, I was talking to his son fifty years ago, yesterday. Gene Peters was sworn in as our mayor, and I personally want to thank him for being here and for all of his service and the beautiful, wonderful family that he has. I also want to thank a great friend of mine, I think a great friend to everyone in the City of Scranton, a fellow Manukian, Mayor Jim Connors. Give Mayor Jim Connors a hand. I also want to recognize State Senator John Blake, who's here today, State Representative Marty Flynn, State Representative Kyle Mullins, State Representative Bridget Kozarowski, School Board President Katie Gil-Martin, School Board Vice President Tom Schuster. And I also want to thank again City Councilman John Pochas for all of his guidance that he's provided. Thank you. And I also want to thank again, City Councilman John Pochas for all of his guidance that he's provided. Thank you. Well, the first person that I have to thank is my beautiful wife Kelly, who is here today someplace. Oh, there she is, up in the balcony. For her support and her love. I am so proud of her for so many different reasons. She is a wonderful mother to our three children and she is an outstanding wife. We just found out last week that we are having a baby girl in May, so we're very excited. Our house will be even more chaotic, although I don't know if that's possible. My children, Jack, Murphy, and Maeve, who were here today, they're very excited that they're getting a baby sister. And Jack and Murphy did a wonderful job holding the Bible, so you'll get an Oreo cookie after the ceremony today. I want to say how much I love them and how very proud I am of them. Kelly and I actually decided it might be a good idea for me to take the gavel and maybe use it at home, so we'll see how that works out. I want to thank my parents, who are here today, Jack and Marie. They are my biggest supporters in everything that I do. I am so very proud of them. My dad, I'm so proud of him for, number one, being a great father and a United States Marine, and my mom for being the most compassionate, understanding person that I've ever met. I want to thank my brother Eddie and Katie for being here and all of their support. I also have to thank my father and mother-in-law, Jim and Mari Wright, who are here. I want to thank the amazing aunts and uncles that I have, who have always been there for me. As you know, I've mentioned on this council, my Uncle Billy and my Uncle John were going through a great battle with cancer and the community stepped up for them, as the community does for everyone who's going through great challenges like that. I can remember each time I ran for office, my Uncle John accompanied me. We had some great times walking the streets of Scranton. And I just appreciate everything that my aunts and uncles have done for me. I also, today, am thinking of my grandparents, Bill and Elizabeth Gahn, and Helen and Edward Trentley. I'm thinking of my wife's grandmother, Mary McLean. They were all involved in one way or another in politics and they all love this city. And I think that they would be thrilled today to see all these great people here, a new mayor in Paige Cognetti, and our willingness to work together to make this city the greatest city, not only in northeastern Pennsylvania, but in the country. I want to thank my colleagues for putting their faith in me to lead this council as president over the next two years. Mr. McAndrew, Dr. Rothschild, congratulations on your victory. I want to thank Councilman Rogan for his leadership as president over the last two years and his friendship, and also Councilman Donahue for his friendship and leadership over the last two years. I promise to do my duties as council president with honesty and integrity while always putting the people first. This past year, as all of you in this room have known, has been a very difficult time for our city. The people of Scranton were dealt a devastating blow that shook their faith and confidence in government and elected officials to its absolute core. People in Scranton and in this region are physically and mentally exhausted from corruption. I'm here to say that today is a new day. Today is our chance to put all of this behind us and to begin to write a new chapter for the city of Scranton. A chapter that is built on a foundation of openness, transparency, accountability, and honesty. We currently face many challenges that at some times may seem insurmountable. But it's my belief that with great challenges comes great opportunity. Now is not the time to shy away from being in public service. Now is not the time to say, "Leave it up to somebody else." One person can't make a difference. There's no hope and the job is too hard. From the school board to council, to our new county commissioners, a new generation of leaders must stand up and fight for this city that we all love so much. Senator Robert F. Kennedy made a speech in South Africa in 1966 where he said, "First is the danger of futility." The belief that there is nothing one man or one woman can do against the enormous array of the world's ills. Against misery and ignorance, injustice, and violence. Yet many of the world's great movements of fraud and action have flowed from the work of a single man or woman. A young monk began the Protestant Reformation. A young general extended an empire from Macedonia to the borders of the earth. And a young woman reclaimed the territory of France. It was a young Italian explorer who discovered the New World. And thirty-two-year-old Thomas Jefferson, who proclaimed that all men are created equal. "Give me a place to stand," said Archimedes, "and I will move the world." These men and women move the world, and so can we all. We have a special opportunity that starts today to chart a new course for the city of Scranton. In my six years on council, I have never been more hopeful that we can overcome our challenges by working together with our new mayor, Paige Cognetti. In the past, these reorganization meetings have amounted to nothing more than lip service. Everyone pledges to work together and solve issues in January and a few months go by and it seems like we're stuck in neutral. At least that's been my experience in the past. We cannot fall into this trap again. We stand at a critical moment in the city's history where we can actually make a difference or we can maintain the status quo. We must work closely with Mayor Cognetti and her administration while maintaining council's role as a check and balance and understanding that dissent, disagreement, and debate should not be looked down upon, but appreciated and encouraged as long as it's done in a respectful manner with the best interests of the city in mind. I pledge to all of you today that this council is willing and ready to get to work, be open and honest with the people of the city, and begin to write the city's next chapter. Thank you and God bless the city of Scranton. And now I would ask Father Edwards to please come forward once again to offer the benediction.
And let us pray. Lord God, give each member of council the ears to listen to the voices of the people speak, at times even from this podium. Hearts to hear the needs of the people. Eyes to see the problems of our people. With a voice to work and speak for justice and peace, to make our city great again and always. We make all our prayers in your name. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father Edwards. The next regularly scheduled meeting of council will be held on Tuesday, January fourteenth, 2020, at 6:30 PM. If there is no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone.